Welcome, everybody, to the July 16, 2024 meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The commission now utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete a speaker request form located at the back of the shelves in the back of the chambers. Return to Commission Manager Holly Hennies located at the lower right side of the dais. This meeting will be called, the meeting to order, and I'll do, ask Ms. Hagcock to do the moment of sat reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Commissioner. Next on our agenda is review, a review and approval of the agenda. I'd like to move item number 10, which is the OSHA Proposed Emergency Response Rule Presentation, up to after items, excuse me, seven, or after item six, sorry. That's the state South Dakota Department Legislative Audit. So I'd like to move, make that change.
That be my motion?
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Laster, to approve the agenda with the change of, moving item 10 up to after item six. Any discussion? See none, all in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, that brings us up to the consent agenda, and I will recognize Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is activated by one motion and vote of the board. Items they have removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of July 2, 2024. Approval of vouchers in the amount of $4,112,166.83. Number C is to approve the renewal of the retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for the gaslight, and to release the license upon a payment of appropriate property taxes. Now, D is to approve the abatement application for tax year 2023 for Kelly Smith, parcel number 8001521, in the amount of $497.52. E is approval of the third quarter 2024 local emergency management performance grant. Effort to declare surplus for the purpose of decommission, one 2024 International 7600 Truck, asset number 81523, and to declare surplus for the purpose of online action, one 1991 Ford Tiger FC 415L, asset number 050419, and one 1992 Bobcat 7753, asset number 002639, all submitted by the Highway Department. And finally, G is to recognize and type volunteers for the month of June 2024.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? See none, I go to the board. Is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? None? I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Laster. Any discussion? None? All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us up to regular agenda items, and it's item six. And I'll recognize Mr. Bruce Heights.
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 I'll just call you Bruce.
That works, too. Can you hear me, Gary?
Yeah, I can.
She wanted me to talk right into the mic. Bruce has the legislative audit. We're just getting started. I want to come down. We're just starting with the 2023 fiscal and compliance audit for Pennington County. Everybody should have a copy of our, we'll call our engagement letter, and outlines the audit process and procedures we're going through. Just wanted to come down and tell you we started. We've been here a couple of weeks, and see if you guys had any questions, I guess, was basically all I wanted to come down for today, was just to give our, give our entrance conference and get this letter signed.
Any questions for Bruce? Ms. Hagcock?
I didn't know if we talked to you, I mean, we talked to Cindy the other day about bonding on using either GO bonds, which are those, a levy, which is put on, for, what we're looking at is for the jail, and then, or a opt-out. Do you, can you tell us a little bit about the GO bonds?
I...
Or do you not know?
GO bonds? I'm not even sure what...
What they do is you impose a levy, and what that imposed levy is, is they use GO bonds to do that. And they're, they're bonds that actually...
Like a general, general obligation, GO bond? Is that...
Yeah, maybe it's, I call it GO. Sorry.
(laughing).
Go jail.
Um...
We're looking for options of what we can do to, to help our, move forward on our jail in case there's not enough funding for a jail.
Right, right. Um, yeah, I guess I, I'm not, not real familiar with all the different, different types of bonds that are out there. I mean, we just look at the bonds, and yeah, then they're tied into a, tied into a levy and stuff, you know, or if you do an opt-out. I know I've seen some places do that, that, I think Lawrence has got an opt-out that's dedicated towards theirs.
Yeah.
But theirs, theirs isn't really, it wasn't really tied into the statute, if I remember right up there, for the debt service statute.
Right.
It was more of a, it was more of a GO, GO bond type opt-out they did, because it's coming in through general fund.
Actually, on the GO fund, you can't use general fund for that, but they did use basically the opt-out, is what they changed to.
What they did, yeah. That's what Lawrence was doing, was the opt-out part of it. But it was, it was coming through, and then what they were going to do is transfer it to a debt service fund to pay for it.
Right.
But it was through, through more of a general, general obligation type.
General fund.
Right.
Yeah, where you can't do that with the, with the GO bonds. You have to, for the, for the debt service, it has to be like a, basically you're doing a capital project, and all that levy has to go to, towards that project, so...
Yeah. Yeah, but I guess as far as the details and the specifics, what's the difference or anything? I'm not real familiar, I guess.
You know who would be?
Who have you guys dealt with on some of your other bonds?
Tom.
US Bank or something?
What's his name, Cindy?
Tom Brimman.
He'd be the one to talk to. I wouldn't want to say anything and mislead you guys, but that's who, that's who you guys have dealt with before with the other bonds. That's who I'd go through, him, and get some guidance, I guess, what his thoughts were.
And I apologize, Bruce. I thought Cindy told me to talk to the, to the man that was doing the audit for us, so I misunderstood Ms. Cindy. That was my fault, so, sorry, Cindy.
Not a problem, not a problem.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Any, it's going to be the normal audit?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Nothing has really changed since, since the last few years. We've been pretty much doing the same type, you know, we go through and take a sample of revenue, expenditures, and the payroll. We got to test federal compliance with your federal grants, and I think you guys spent a big chunk of that ARPA money from last year. You transferred some of that, so almost $7 million over to the, to the general fund. I'm guessing that's probably the program we're going to end up having to test. But yeah, we go through and, and test, test the financial statements that Cindy's presented, and, and all the supporting schedules that go in the audit report, so nothing's really changed there. If you guys have any questions, you know, we'll be here for a couple of months at least.
Yeah.
You know, we're working down in the auditor's office. If you don't have any questions today, that's fine. Stop by, email me. Cindy's got my phone number. You can call my cell phone, too, or something. If something comes up, stop by and visit, whatever you want.
Appreciate it, Bruce. Is there any further questions for Bruce?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross Connect.
Bruce, there's a sentence here, the county has, the county has chosen not to prepare or include management discussion and analysis as part of the audit report. Can you expand on that just a little bit?
There's, oh, I don't know how many years ago it was, GASB is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, that, that governs how you guys have to report your financial statements here and what goes into the audit. Back when they made a change, and I don't know if, it seems like that was part of GASB 34, I can't remember. Anyway, they, they added one part of it that's called management discussion and analysis. And there was a lot of narrative in there describing certain financial aspects of the county and everything, and then some tables, you know, about, about various things financially and everything. And initially, I think most of the counties, well, most local governments across the state that were required to, to complete the annual report were, were using that. And over time, it got to be a lot of work, a lot of the entities didn't understand it, and nobody was really looking at it. So, I don't know how many years ago, it's been at least 10, 15 years, you guys, maybe at least, that they had the county decided not, Julie and, Julie and KJ were still here back then doing the annual report, and they decided not to complete it anymore. All that happens by not completing it, we put, we put something into the opinion letter that said, you know, opinion letters are what says the financial statements are fairly presented, whether you get a qualified or unqualified opinion, but there's a qualification in there that this wasn't, wasn't prepared. It doesn't really do anything, it's just says you guys didn't prepare. There's no written finding for it or anything like that, you know? That's the thing, if there would be a written finding, maybe you'd want to consider otherwise, but it just goes into the opinion letter and says, you know, and all other aspects of the audit report, everything was fairly presented. It's typically what's been happening in past audits, other than the fact that this management discussion and analysis wasn't prepared, so...
Okay, well, thank you for explaining that.
If you want to look at one, we could go back. I mean, if you want to see what's in one, we could go back to whenever, you said 10, 15 years, we could find an audit that's got one in it, if you don't want to see what one looks like, so...
Okay, well, thank you.
Any further questions for Bruce?
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
Can I get your autograph on this?
Sure.
I've got the original in here.
(inaudible). Okay. (inaudible).
John, does he has a phone muted?
(inaudible). He's unable to mute.
Okay.
Why?
Okay.
Just the way he's patched in.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
I think, should we try to get through the phone deal till a few, well, until at least we get to planning?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
Mr. Chair, did we make a, we didn't make a motion on that item to put your signature on that?
It's, oh, no, we didn't. No, we didn't.
I'll make that motion to authorize the chair's signature on the engagement letter from South Dakota Department Legislative Audit for the 2023 audit.
Second. Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Ross Connect to approve. Any further discussion? None? All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Travis. Next, we moved up item 10, which is the OSHA's Proposed Emergency Response Rule Presentation. I'll recognize Jerome.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Jerome Harvey, Fire Administrator, Pennington County, South Dakota. Today with me, I have Chief Walla, Whispering Pines Volunteer Fire Department, along with Chief Long of the Rapp City Fire Department, that can help us understand better the issue concerning OSHA 156, the change in the emergency response standard. So any technical issues or any additional information? They have that for us. Both of them, Chief Walla's become a subject matter expert on it. We also have Chief Jaden, who presented this the last time. We're simply asking for the county commission to put its weight behind the chorus that's going across the nation, saying, hey, slow down, OSHA. We respect the fact that you want to make things safer, but is this the way to really go about it with the government over, government overreach? Commissioner Drews did request some additional review as far as the, what OSHA does in the state, and we have Chief Walla that can address that a little further for you, to help answer some of those questions, if you'd like to do that.
Thanks, Jerome.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you again for giving us time to come up and speak with you on this matter again. What we see before us today was...
Chief, can you get the microphone? We got one person, and then just...
Sound a little better?
Yep, and just identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Chief, Fire Chief Jeremy Walla, with Whispering Pines Volunteer Fire Department. And I'm here to speak to you today on an ongoing matter with the, the OSHA rule changes that they're proposing. And at the end of the day, what we need to remember and what we want to really look at on what we're discussing today is we aren't asking you to make any changes, we aren't asking you to create new laws or, or anything along those sort of lines. All that we're asking for is that you put a comment into OSHA. And in your packets, if you look through your packets on several of the documents that you have, you have a memo from Jerome in there, you have some paperwork from, I believe it was HR, from the county. And in that documentation from the county, if you go to page 86, it'll have some highlighting at the top here, some underlining, and 86 down at the bottom. On that page, underneath the highlighting and, and underlining, it states, "OSHA encourages stakeholders to engage with local and state officials about reducing potential impacts of proposed rule. Additionally, the agency seeks input on what it could do in the final rule to reduce undesirable impacts on volunteer organizations." And that is exactly why we're here today, and exactly why we've presented this letter to you and, and are asking you to submit this as a comment to OSHA. That's all that we're doing. And the reason for it is, there are 29 states in the Union who will be impacted by this day one, minute one. If this goes into play, they will have, OSHA will have the hammer that they need to pound departments into submission or create issues for them if they have any sort of injury or, God forbid, a death of somebody who's on duty, volunteer or not. Because many of the states are deeming their volunteers as employees one way or another. In our own state statute, we are volunteers and we are employees for work comp purposes. Now, I'm not a lawyer, so I, I can't speak to that if that's going to come into play. At this time, we don't know. We need OSHA to tell us those things, and that's really what we're after. We're really trying to submit comments, both locally, regionally, nationally, into this so that we can get some input. This was sprung on the volunteer world and fire service, really by accident did it get noticed, when they had to give some legal notices and things like that, and it was an upswell. We only had a few days left to comment in that period, so nationally, through the NVFC, the IAFC, and many other organizations, we petitioned and got another 45-day extension so that we could look at this, we could comment on it, we could read the documentation. There's over 9,000 pages of documentation that you have to read. If you go to the OSHA website and you read through this, and you start getting into all the NFPA pieces that will come into play, there's many, many pages. It takes a long time. I've, I've put myself 100 hours into this, between the NVFC, my own department, county, trying to read this, trying to understand it, seeing how this is going to impact Pennington County, South Dakota, and those around us. Almost every state that we border is an OSHA state. With 29 states, this is going to become federal law. We still have to follow federal law. This is going to impact how we get grants, this is going to impact, you know, how we do business as a fire service across the country, whether we're in OSHA state or not. So this will impact us, to what degree is to be seen. We don't know yet. We haven't heard from OSHA on these clarification things. One of the big things that we're looking at is for the medical. They want everybody to have a, a medical checkup every two years, and their cost that they're saying is, is less than $800 a year. That is wholly inaccurate. I don't know where they come up with that. I personally have done the NFPA 1582 physical, and it's all in documentation, on my own, with my own insurance, and I still paid about $5,500 out of pocket to get the tests and the blood work and everything else that's in that documentation. So there's one test on that NFPA physical. If we have to follow that to the letter, because they're dragging this in by reference, there's one test that's over $1,000. So I don't know where they're coming up with that number. Now, in South Dakota, there are a few rules that we have to follow to be an actual fire department, one of those being that we have to have 15 members on our roster. So even at $1,000, let's just say that's the cost, that's $15,000 to the bottom line that we have to absorb and figure out, sell pancakes, sell ice cream, or change our, our taxing districts, just to absorb that one item. So if that comes into play, or that becomes the expected standard, that's going to have a financial impact right away. Very many departments in South Dakota that only have maybe a $2,000, $3,000, $5,000 budget. Where are they going to come up with the extra $10,000? So these are a lot of things that we don't know. These are a lot of things that, you know, is, is verbiage back and forth in OSHA's own document. It'll say that volunteers don't have to worry about it. Non-OSHA states, you know, maybe don't have to comply. But at the end of the day, in the court of law, what's going to happen? If we have an injury or a death, how is that going to be looked upon in the court? When somebody wants to bring me as a fire chief in civilly because of something that's happened, and they're trying to get work comp to cover the, the injury, or they're trying to, you know, with wrongful death, things like that, because of decisions we've made? So let's take the, the next item, which is training. They're proposing a very large amount of training that all firefighters will have to adhere to, including officers. Now, to be a basic captain or lieutenant, you're going to have to be a fire officer one, which we have in South Dakota. If you want to be an assistant chief, you have to be a fire officer two, and if you want to be a fire chief, you have to be a fire officer three. Fire officer two and three are only offered in about 20-some states at this time. So there's another cost. Those classes are about a week to two weeks long, you're going to have travel, you're going to have the cost of the class. So again, if we're going to be held to the standard, or we're going to be asked in grant paperwork, or any of these other things that could happen, that's where we're trying to say, whoa, slow this down, let's get some clarification on things, let's get some more information, and let's, I don't know, ask volunteer departments to participate in the conversation, before we just say, you know what's going to be good for you? Here's a whole list of things that you need to do. The other thing with, with interpreting this and bringing this in by reference, all of these NFPA, if we're going to do it by reference, in NFPA documentation, if you read through all of the guidelines, they've referenced other NFPA guidelines. So there's 21 that they're proposing that they bring in by reference, there's at least another 23 to 24 that are referenced within those. And if we want to read those, and we want to try, and we want to strive, and we want to be better, and we want to follow the federal law if this gets put in place, we have to buy those. We don't even get a copy of them. They're $149 apiece. We're going to spend $6,000 just to get the documentation, to read it, to see what we can follow. Right now, as it stands, NFPA are guidelines and, and best operating practices, and the agency having jurisdiction is allowed to pick and choose those items that really, truly affect their department. Not every department is the same. I think most of you have been around long enough and, and heard other things that, that we've dealt with in the fire service, to understand, if you have 23 departments, you have 23 different ways that those are set up, and 23 different ways that they do business. And it's in the level of care they provide, it's in the options that they do. Not everybody's hazmat operations, not everybody does medical, not everybody does rescue. Some don't even do wildland. So it's all over the board, but by reference, these will be law and will be held to those standards. This has got a greater effect as well. A lot of us go out through the summer months and through mutual aid agreements and contracts. We go out and we support the national fire. So we're out on these big wildland fires, Schroeder fires, so when you call a team in for a fire, like we did with Schroeder, we did with, with some of the other fires here in the Block Hills, along with that comes federal resources, cooperators, contractors, federal resources, come from all over the country to fight our fire. If this goes into play, we've already seen things similar to this in California, where if we aren't in OSHA state, we can't go to California. That's an example of something that could happen. Again, we need clarification on these items. The only person that's going to be able to provide that is OSHA. So if we don't put in enough comments that make them stop and think about this, and go back to the drawing board a little bit, nobody's denying that these are good things. Nobody's denying that we shouldn't be following these. In Pennington County, I would say that the vast majority of the departments are striving to meet these NFPA codes every single day that affect their departments. We are all pretty progressive, we all work hard, we all have long-range plans, we all are looking for all of those parts and pieces, because at the end of the day, what are these for? It's to keep our people safe. And if you think that I don't go home at night, or when I'm on shift and I'm sitting at the department at 2:00 in the morning, that I'm not thinking about my people and how I keep them safe, and are they trained well enough, and did I give them this, and do they have the right gear? You'll be mistaken. That goes through my head daily. So that's kind of where we're at, and really, like I said, what, what we're asking is that you sign this letter so that we can submit it, and it adds to the comments. And we're doing exactly as OSHA asks us to do, to engage with our policymakers, to engage with municipalities, districts, states, to give OSHA comments, because they realize, and they state it in their own documents in your packet, that this could have huge downstream consequences that aren't quite seen yet. And that's all that we're asking today, is, is that you sign this, we submit it, and it adds to the already nearly 2,500 comments that we've been able to, to drum up. And we aren't asking for anything out of, out of the ordinary. There are many commissions, there are many departments, my own department, all the national organizations have all already submitted comments, so that's all this is, is just comments on it, saying, hey, we have these concerns, let's see how we can address those, and how we can minimize those impacts that could come our way, OSHA state or not, so...
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks for clarifying that this is OSHA requesting, you know, public comment that you want to send in, and so I just wanted to make that clear, because some, it wasn't brought up till the end, so people that are online...
Sure.
Kind of understand what that is. Mr. Ross Connect?
So the Social 156 Emergency Response Standard was discussed heavily at our last Fire Service Board meeting. Yes. And it's my understanding that on paper, this looks really good, but in real life, it's just not achievable, and it's not sustainable. And it not, it'll affect Rapp City Fire Department, Sioux Falls Fire Department, but the real impact's going to be on the volunteer fire departments. It's already, we, we already know that it's just hard to find volunteers now because of the busy schedule, but the thrill this add them, it could just be the beginning of the end of volunteer fire departments as we know it today. So I fully support this letter.
Chairman.
Appreciate that. Ms. Hagcock?
So when I'm reading the executive summary, it says, while OSHA standards do not apply to volunteers, some volunteers are covered in the state with OSHA-approved state plan program. So you're calling yourself volunteers, but then you're also stating in, what is, Walter McDuff's, and it's a good letter, and I'm for the letter, by the way, workers' compensation making them, all, our volunteers are covered under our working, workers' compensation making them Pennington County employees. So are you saying that maybe OSHA's going to call you employees of the, of the county, and the standards are going to change?
It is, it is one possibility. In our state statute, it does say that the only purpose that we're, we're seen as employees is for work comp.
Right.
But then, again, in OSHA's own document, they talk about renumeration, and there's places where it says that that may or may not be counted as...
Employee.
Income or, or renumeration, so it's so gray, and the only one that can answer that is OSHA. And we, we need them to, like I said, slow this down, don't adopt it right away, give us some time to actually digest this, and invite volunteer agencies to actually sit at the table to make these decisions and say, here's how things should be broken out and classified.
So Jeremy, and did you guys take this to our state's attorney's office to let him look basically on OSHA rules and regulations?
Walter did. Mr. McDuff did. Walter, you want to come up and give the alternative opinion?
That's where Walter got his standards, because I keep hearing, hearing on this document, volunteers are not covered, but the bottom line is, are they going to classify you under OSHA as employees or volunteers? And what does the state say, basically that you're an employee, volunteers are, or you are volunteers?
So in, in the state statute, it says, from the time of dispatch till the time we return to that place of dispatch, we are considered employees.
Okay.
Now, it says that's the only time we're considered employees. So again, that is a big gray area, but I'm not a lawyer, I don't, you know, I, I'm not an HR, I, I don't know how this is going to play out, and those are the questions that we're asking OSHA in our comments, is we need a clear definition of what this means, and OSHA states, non-OSHA states, you know, what are you consider, what is true significant renumeration, because they fall back on whatever the Department of Labor says. But if you ever read through that document for fire departments, it's insanity on trying... that document for fire departments, it's insanity on trying to make sure that, you know, what can we do for the volunteers, and what we can't do for the volunteers, and what pot of money can we use, and what can't we use. And it goes all the way to something simple, is providing them dinner at the fire hall. What money can we use to do that? Is it tax money? Is it donation money? Is it, you know, those kinds of things. So we've had to work through all of that already.
Right.
But until OSHA comes out and specifically spells it out and says, here's what this means. Because if you read through that documentation, it contradicts itself almost on the same page.
Yes, 'cause it says
It doesn't count, volunteers aren't gonna be impacted, but they might be, and there may be downstream effects. I mean, you can read through the documentation, and it's on each page, so.
So, well, they start, sorry, Commissioner, so they start with all these standards, and what they're worried about is the comprehensive emergency response standard. And they wanna make sure it sounds like that you guys have that covered, full range of hazards currently facing emergency responders. To me, it sounds like OSHA's worried about that our responders, or maybe our volunteers, aren't covered enough, or meaning following the standards, or getting enough training. And maybe that's in other states, but I can tell you from being on the Fire Service Board, you're exception to the rule for this, for our Fire Service Board. But then it comes in the back, and it starts, that's where you're talking about what contradicts what they're saying. Understand, what they're trying to do is make sure that you guys are covered in those standards. And I don't know, maybe they have a lot of volunteers that, in the fire departments across the nation, that had issues with reducing impacts on the, on the, on the standards of how we do public safety for our Fire Service Boards. But, and bottom line is, I'm for the letter. I'm for what we're doing, because it also says OSHA welcomes public comment on these issues. The main thing we need to clear up through the state, or even through our state's attorney's office, is to make sure, or Walter, our public safety after, or our risk manager, are we as volunteer fire departments, employees or volunteers? And how is OSHA gonna classify them once you change the rules and regs? So that's the bottom line, what I got out of here. So from what I've seen, like I said, we are exception to the standard in Pennington County. I can tell you from being on the boards. But I don't know what those standards would change if we had to make four hundred and fifty firefighters under employees of Pennington County, so.
Right. And at the end of the day, that's just one line item that we don't want clarification on.
Right.
There are hundreds and hundreds of clarification points on this proposed ruling. And, you know, again, that's why we need this letter in the comment, and thank you for the support on it.
The main thing is, need someone, and maybe that's Walter, OSHA expert, because OSHA, I don't know, Lloyd probably knows from construction and other areas, just from my husband, construction and the rules and regulations that they put forth, some are just over the top. So I think I'm getting where you guys are going. Some of this just might be over the top for you guys, and also Pennington County, and what we do here. So I'm for the letter and moving forward.
I'm gonna, I was gonna try and get Walter up. Walter did do some investigation on this, and at the request of a commissioner. So if you could share your point on this, I think, from what I gathered from the commission, they support your letter. But I think there was some information that was asked, and so maybe he could clarify some of this for us.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Chief.
Thank you.
Walter McDuff, Pennington County Risk Manager. So I'm gonna start off with talking about this employees, the employee characterization. So yes, our volunteer fire departments are considered employees of Pennington County, as the chief stated, the minute that they are dispatched to the minute that they get back. Okay? Far as what OSHA and the standard state is substantial, substantial justification to them. So very, a substantial monetary means, whether we pay them, or we have healthcare benefits on them, et cetera. Workers' comp is not considered that, right? Workers' comp is considered what workers' comp is. And that's obviously to take care of our volunteers and our staff within Pennington County when they get injured. And it stops when they either reach MIB, which is maximum improvement, or when they, when the injury just subsides from it. Okay? So they're only employees from that period of time. And while they're under workers' comp, or being seen for workers' comp, they're considered an employee. But that's not a substantial means. Okay? And that's coming. So let me backtrack for a little bit. Yes, the board asked me to look at this. I think it was June eighteenth, Jerome, that we first brought this to the board. And I did look at this. I neither disagree or agree. I have to remain neutral in this. And the reason for that is, my main job, as you guys all hired me to do, is be the risk manager for Pennington County. Okay? So I first, as I stated, sorry about As I stated, in your guys' memo that I wrote to you, I read this emergency standard, emergency response standard that I was provided by Jerome. This was about a six hundred and two, six hundred and eight-page standard, which I could tell you is overall the executive summary. Okay? It's the executive summary to this nine thousand pages is the way that I interpreted it. Okay? And you guys have those examples that you have in front of you, snippets from that executive summary. They were provided to these, to Jerome and the rest of the fire board. Now, where am I coming from on this? So I looked at that emergency response standard. I didn't stop there. I reached out to, obviously, I spoke to the state's attorney's office. I reached out to our South Dakota Department, OSHA Office that's located in Sioux Falls. I spoke to two individuals there, one by Shauna and one by Mark. And both of those individuals had told me that they have no jurisdiction over us. They have zero jurisdiction over us, because we're a government entity. But I didn't stop there. I spoke to Jerome a little bit after the department head meeting last week, and we had a discussion, and he provided me the concerns that you guys all have. And so when I spoke to Mark, and when I spoke to Mark, this was early as yesterday. When I spoke to Mark and I voiced the concerns that they have, they told me, we do not have jurisdiction over you guys. And I said, Mark, I understand what you guys are saying to us, but I need this in writing. I need something in writing that shows that you, that our volunteers are not going to be affected by this proposed OSHA standard. And so he referred me to the director of OSHA, right? The director of OSHA told me that he's going to, excuse Commissioners, he's still a puppy. The director told me he's gonna read this pamphlet and get back to me. I was hoping for him to get back to me yesterday, but he didn't get back to me yesterday, and hopefully sometime today. And I'll provide that to all of you, once I hear back from him. So to the point that Chief mentioned on page eighty-six, and I'm not here to disqualify anything that you're saying, Chief.
No, absolutely.
What, page eighty-six, you gotta look at what page eighty-five says first. The bullet point on page eighty-five. And if you, on this one, Commissioner. Page eighty-five starts off with B, state plans. Okay?
Hold on. Walter, where's that at?
It's in these.
I have eighty-six, where it's
On the backside of
I'm using the wrong paper. I knew where eighty-six was, but for some reason, thank you.
Yep. So this starts off with state plans. So this, this outline here that we're talking about is state plans. And then the paragraph that the chief highlighted, as well as I highlighted to provide to you guys, if you look at the first thing that I highlighted, it says, in states with OSHA-approved state plans. That's why I highlighted that, and I highlighted what we have below. While the proposed rules do not directly apply to volunteers, because OSHA does not have regulatory authority over volunteers, this agency is concerned with the potential downstream economic impact that proposed rule may have on organizations with volunteer responders. So yes, they're acknowledging that, the reason I've highlighted that is, one, they're stating that they don't have the authority over our volunteers. But they're also acknowledging if our volunteers, and not just our volunteers in South Dakota, but volunteers throughout the nation, if they're, if this goes into act, they are considering the economic impact that this has on volunteers throughout our nation. And I do not disagree if this goes in, if this OSHA plan was to be enacted, it would hurt probably every one of our volunteer fire departments economically. You know, like I said, I read through all six hundred and two pages. So what does that, where does that leave me? As what I was tasked to do by the board, I was tasked to look at this, and how would it liability impact Pennington County or the board itself? First and foremost, I'm not turning down the letter that the chief wrote.
Chief Jayden.
Oh, Chief Jayden wrote? Thank you, Chief. I'm not turning that down. I'm not agreeing with it, or I'm not disagreeing with it. I have to be neutral on this. Where my concern comes, and this was, this was a couple of talks with the state's attorney's office. If you guys sign that letter, the perceived intention that you guys have by signing that is, is you guys acknowledging this standard. Yes, I understand that the standard asks for comments. And as, if we look at page eighty-six, you know, as the chief said, OSHA encourages stakeholders to engage with local and state officials about reducing potential impacts of the proposed rule. But I refer you back to that stating with states that have, that are either OSHA, follow OSHA, or they follow the OSHA Act of nineteen seventy, which is an approved state plan. We are neither. Okay? So I stand on that. Where I come at is, I neither agree or disagree with what the fire board has brought to you guys. Where I stand in front of you guys and say, what is Walter's standpoint as the Pennington County Risk Manager, is not to put your guys' signature on that. Because what the perception will be if you guys put your signature on it?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
What would that perception be, Walter?
Well, there's a lot that will come from that, Commissioner Lassiter. One is, you're agreeing with this standard. I don't know if Jay is here. You're agreeing with the standard that is in front of you guys right now. You guys are saying that you accept what this standard is coming, what this, excuse me, what this standard is saying. So by you guys agreeing with that, I'm not saying for the volunteer departments not to make their comments. I'm not saying that at all.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
You're talking.
Bomber, yeah, he's being a puppy still. I'm not saying not to make a comment. Our volunteer fire departments, our chiefs, et cetera, I'm not telling them not to. Where we stand is that, Commissioner Lassiter, is by putting the board of commissioners, the Penny County Board of Commissioners' signature, eventually our chair's signature on this letter that they wrote, the perception that will come across is that.
Mr. Chair, if I may clarify. So you're saying, if we put our signature on this letter, that means we agree with OSHA that their standard is correct?
I'll let Jay verify it.
But we're asking, you know, exceptions and all that kinda stuff? I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're saying.
I don't think we can get that link.
Jay Alderman with State's Attorney's Office. I think the only concern would be when you argue against these standards, you're implying that they must apply to us. Otherwise, why would I be arguing against them? And that's a concern. It's a general concern. I would, maybe to put this to rest, just simply say this. If the board is inclined to sign off instead of just have the volunteer fire chief, or your county fire chief, sign and send the letter, I would recommend, like, proviso at the beginning of that letter, just simply saying, by no circumstances shall you take this as us implicitly agreeing that these standards apply to us. Because everything I've heard what Walter has said, and talking with the people from OSHA, they do not apply. But we don't know, perhaps, even when they don't apply to us, if they apply in some fashion, that that trickle-down then could impact us. We don't know what that is. I don't know what that is. Maybe when Walter hears from the actual director of OSHA, that would be nice. But the timing, of course, is imperfect right now, always. You know, we're always at that eleventh and a half hour ago. So I would say, if you want to sign the letter, just have it edited to include a proviso at the beginning that just simply says, us signing and submitting this letter in no means shall be taken as an implicit or tacit agreement that the standards apply. We don't believe they do. Nonetheless, here's our concern in the event that perhaps, maybe, there's a trickle-down economic impact to us. So that would be my compromise to kinda settle this today. I think both sides are very honorable in what they're doing, and trying to do their best.
Mr. Chair. And, I'm sorry, Commissioner and Chair, I do agree with what Jay's saying. If you guys want to sign this, to put that snippet in there would be the best thing for us all to do.
Okay, I heard Mr. Roskin.
So Walter, if you hear back from the director, I would suggest that that response be in writing, dated, and signed.
Yes, sir. And I asked for that. When I specifically spoke to Mark, I told him, I said, and I explained to him the gray areas that we have. This is nothing but gray areas in this. I didn't have a chance to, and to be honest, or the time to read nine thousand pages. I know one of your chiefs did, or you did, you know. And I didn't have that chance. I had the chance to read what was provided to me, was that six hundred and two-page executive summary. When I gave these gray areas to Mark, who's OSHA, OSHA Chief Safety Officer for OSHA here in South Dakota, I explained to him, that's the main concern here. I get it, you're telling me that we're not OSHA obligated, that you have no jurisdiction on us, you know. But I said, that's great, but I have gray areas that my fire administrator is concerned about, as well as our volunteer fire departments are. I need this in writing. And that's why he referred me to the board, Chairman.
You know, I think part of the problem is that the volunteer fire departments were never invited to the roundtable when they put this together. And we wouldn't be here today, probably, if that would have happened. So that's just my two cents worth.
Absolutely. And I do, I wanna make sure that you understand, and I appreciate all the work and time you've put in. And I see this as a sensible compromise in putting this in the beginning of that letter.
Yep.
You know, again, that's what we're asking, is that we're showing support to the fire service in general across the nation. And in doing that, saying, we have these questions, now it's up to OSHA to answer those. And we just don't wanna see this enacted, and then find out what that downstream effect is. We'd rather catch that upfront, so that we can prepare, and how do we make this happen. And I think this is a great compromise. And I think that, at the end of the day, again, you've gone through this documentation too, and the summary and everything else. It's wishy-washy.
It's very, very wishy-washy, like the chief said. But if, like you said, Chief, and I'm fine with that, Chair, if we put that snippet in there, it'll put this to rest, and we could get that letter submitted, because I believe you guys have to have it by Monday.
The twenty-second till this month is the last day for
Okay, I do have Ms. Haggard in mind.
So what you're saying, it could be a liability. Basically, if we put our name on it, and not put a snippet in there, that basically, we want to support our Fire Service Board. And I know it sounds like all of us want to, but we wanna make sure that the county is covered by the liability. I got the bottom line on it, which I appreciate, because we do support you guys. But we also have to worry about what that consequences to those actions are. So Jay, perfect solution today for that, supporting our Fire Service Board, but still listening to our risk managers. So I agree with the solution that you came up with. And I also
Mr. Chair.
As you guys know, appreciate the Fire Service Board and OSHA, just listening to other people, and even with our motels, we have OSHA stuff going on. They are so particular. motels, we have OSHA stuff going on, um, they are so particular in a certain extent that if you don't follow these rules and regulations, so I understand also where you guys are coming from, whether it be Walter or the fire service board, what those consequences would be if they weren't followed, or if we don't follow the role as first responders in your guys' case. So thank you both for, for this. One more, one more thing, Walter, it'd be nice to know what the guy on top says about the OSHA standards and, um, what, uh, in writing, uh, could be the consequences of, of, you know, the le, the letter or our actions about what we're doing.
Yes, ma'am, as soon as I receive contact, um, I will forward that, like I mentioned, to everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Ross connect next.
So I guess, would the motion today, if we make a motion, would be to move, to approve the amended letter?
Correct.
With the proviso.
Right. Of support of the OSHA requesting a delay in the implementation of the proposed emergency response standard twenty-nine C, F R one-nine-one-zero-point-one-five-six?
That'd be my second.
Would be my motion.
So you, you guys understand, the motion is to add the proviso, and at the beginning of the letter, motion was made by Ross Connect next, and by Ms. Haggok.
Right.
Any further discussion?
I would just say, for everyone's benefit, it would, I didn't read the six thousand pages, but it would have been nice if there had been a couple of sentences in there that simply said, we understand that this, these rules, whether they're enacted or not, do not apply to local volunteer first responders. However, just for the information that might benefit us, we would love for you to comment anyway.
I think that's the proviso. Okay. So I do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in baver indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Next, this brings this up to item eleven, uh, items from Otter, Cindy Moore, and.
Item seven.
Seven.
Sorry.
We moved that one around.
I'm on the second page.
It's okay. Do it all the time.
That brings us, sorry, Cindy, you're not next. I know you did. Next, that brings us up to item seven, which is from, um, a request from the city, and is Mr. Dan, oh, you're hidden behind the monitor, Dan, I didn't see you here. Just introduce yourself for the record, and you'll have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much and good morning. My name is Daniel Ainsley, I'm the Finance Director for the City of Rapid City. Thank you for, uh, taking the time here to do this. The City of Rapid City is making a request that the, uh, Commission look at having a consolidated Board of Equalization for twenty-twenty-five. Uh, the current process, as I'm sure everyone here is well aware, um, of what, uh, everyone goes through, but assessment notices are mailed by March first. By the Thursday before the third Monday, the property owners may appeal, uh, and then starting the third Monday, the local board, uh, begins hearings. At the local board, property owners largely are expected to attend. Um, if they do not attend, it's, uh, usually perceived as being very negative, um, by the local board that is sitting, um, and reviewing their request. There's very limited, uh, information that's available, because there's not necessarily a large timeframe, and that's, uh, not really due to anyone's staffing or anything else, it's just the, the nature of the state statute and the, um, time limitations that are made by the state statute. Um, and also, I, I will admit that city staff is not as knowledgeable as county staff, uh, when there are questions that arise from, uh, the board. It's, um, frankly not something that the city finance office spends a lot of time doing, and so we're usually not able to offer his, uh, in-depth, uh, detailed information, uh, to the city council members and also the, uh, school board member that takes place or that is, uh, participating in the meetings. After a determination, um, it can be appealed to the county board, and that can be done by your, uh, county assessor as well as the property owner themselves. And again, the property owner is largely expected to attend, uh, those as well. Actually, this year, uh, during our meetings, which were, took up the majority of one week in March, uh, during that time, the most frequent comment, uh, that we heard from the taxpayer was that they had to attend two meetings. Um, and it was a short turnaround, no one was really happy that their assessments go up, but, you know, at the end of the day, everyone understood that they were going up, they were usually arguing how high they were going up, that sort of thing. Um, but the most frequent criticism was that they were going to have to attend two separate meetings. Uh, so some potential areas of improvement, uh, that we have been, uh, discussing with your staff as well as with the, uh, school board, is to have a consolidated board. Uh, state statute does not offer a lot of different alternatives, but this is one that is available. It would ease the burden on the property owners, there would be one meeting versus two. Um, additionally, there would be some additional time, uh, where the property owner would be able to gather information as well as the staff that's, uh, providing assistance to that board. Uh, it would ease a burden on the governing entities, um, it would hopefully facilitate some greater cooperation, uh, between the school board and the city council and also the county commission. Um, I think in this, as we've had some discussion, I, I want to make sure that you're aware, it's not that the city's trying to pass off its obligation or anything else, we would be very open if it would be equal representation on the board, or if the county still would want to have, uh, three or four seats, and the city have a couple, I, I don't think there's necessarily, um, there's not a preference, um, from the city. I will say that the majority so far in the city that I have heard have expressed an interest in having, uh, two from each board, that way it's just equal representation, and hopefully it's, uh, um, easier to find members that would be willing to devote four, eight hours, or however long it is, um, to be there. Uh, but with that being said, I don't know if that's a hard line. Um, instead, we're trying to find out, uh, what hopefully would work for each one of the governing entities. Uh, the staffing could be completed by both entities, it's not that the city's not willing to participate, uh, we would be willing to assist, you know, in whatever way is, uh, most advantageous for both entities, we'd be happy to help. Uh, we're not just trying to pass a buck, but we're trying to make this an easier process for the property owners as well as for, um, the entities. And also, it is tremendously easier for the property owners, they only have to show up once. Um, I did hear quite often from, uh, property owners on the phone that were upset that they were going to have to take off, you know, take long lunch breaks or take extra time off just so that they could, um, appeal to, uh, their, their governing bodies, and, you know, they really felt that that was, um, a lot to be asked for, and so hopefully this will at least reduce that burden, um, by half. Uh, the, in order to have a consolidated board for next year, all three taxing entities must pass resolutions by the second Tuesday of November, November twelfth, um, is what that deadline is this year. It would result in a different procedure for Rapid City properties versus the other properties in Pennington County, we know that, and so that might be a little confusing, but I think, uh, overall, the messaging can be fairly clear that if you're a property owner in Rapid City, this is a process, if you're not, then it's another process. Um, and I think very importantly, it would allow property owners to have until the first Tuesday in April to appeal. That's at least one and a half weeks longer than what they have now. And, um, so essentially, what our, uh, request is, if we could start a dialogue so that hopefully we can have resolutions from all three entities that would match what the composition of the board would be. Again, the city is very open to whatever that composition is. It's been suggested to have equal representation too from each, uh, taxing entity, but I, I think we're open to whatever the discussion would be.
Thanks, Dan. I, I think I'm going to give the opportunity for Mr. Alderman to speak on this, because this was brought up, this isn't the first time.
Right.
It, it's been several times, because this commission's all about efficiency, and we, so we've had this discussion, but I think there's been some legal issues along with some other ones before we get, before we start diving into our, our personal comments, I just want the commission to be here for Mr. Alderman.
Uh, Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. So, um, we started looking at this last night and then some this morning, so I'm not going to say I, I'm fully confident in a thorough research of all of the legal issues of consolidating the boards, but, um, I will attempt it like this with regard to what I think I understand about today's presentation. The desire would be to consolidate the City of Rapid City, the Rapid City School District, and the County of Pennington. Those three entities would form a consolidated board. There's a statute, um, and that, that would be more convenient than trying to also include other townships and other cities, because there's a statute that says the voting members can only vote on properties within their jurisdiction. So it appears if you had a consolidated board of multiple jurisdictions, which you can legally do, some would have to sit out and not vote on properties that's in Box Elder, the Rapid City people would have to sit out, Box Elder people would have to sit out when it's a Rapid City, so it would get really confusing, I think. That's my first initial read. The other, uh, issue with regard to, so that's not what's being proposed here, okay? It's just those three entities, so if you're in Rapid City, you're in the school district, if you're in the school district, you're in Rapid City, and then you have Pennington County joining. So those three, uh, entities would, um, you could pass one resolution and have three signatures on it, or you could do three separate resolutions. Uh, they would form this. The other item that I wanted to bring to your attention, there's some reference about having equal representation. There's another statute that, uh, the way I read it says that, um, this consolidated board gets to pick the number of members on the board. The county commission shall make up the majority of that board. So you couldn't do two-two-two. Um, I was just looking at it thinking mathematically, if you wanted to have a board of five, then it would be one representative from the city, one representative from the school district, three representatives from the county commission, because you got to have a majority. Majority of five is three, and you got to have, the majority of that has to be commissioners, so it'd have to, a board of five would have to be one, one, three. Um, and then do the math from there. If you wanted a board of seven, of nine, you just have to make sure that the county commission membership always represents a majority of that overall board. Then, I guess the last comment I would have is that, um, Mr. Ainsley's right, you would, if you're in the city limits, you would appeal, uh, to the consolidated board. If you're any other township or any other city, you would appeal, you would still have to go to their local board, and then you would still have to come to the county, and I don't think you'd come to the county consolidated board, you'd still come, you would be wearing your hats like you always do and hear those appeals. So, uh, you will be hearing more appeals, if you follow me. If you join with the city, you're going to be hearing and being, participating in all of those appeals, and then you're also still going to meet as the regular county Board of Equalization to hear all other appeals that wouldn't come to that consolidated board, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chair.
Do you have any?
My question would be, we're here today with Rapid City, the school board, and the commission. Now, what happens if Hill City comes to us and says, we want to do the same thing Rapid City did, so now we got the Hill City School District, the commission, and the City of Hill City? And that would probably be a different meeting, and then wall, that could be another meeting, and then, and then you said anything outside those cities, that would just be the way that we normally do things, so we could, the commission could be busy.
Because the statute allows any combination, as I read it, of municipalities, school, township, and county. So you could have all kinds of combinations. If they all came under one consolidated board, that'd be a little bit odd, because like I told you earlier, you can only, you can only vote on those that are within your jurisdiction. So if you had a multi-jurisdiction consolidated board, some of them would have to go for a coffee break when dealing with someone else's jurisdiction.
And Mr. Chair, just to point out, you could only bring two municipalities and two school districts, because you would have to still have the five Board of Commissioners, you could only do two municipalities and two school districts at that time.
Well, the bottom line is, I read it, um, whatever your membership is, a majority's got to be the county commission. So, um, you can't literally do an equal representation, two-two-two, three-three-three, four-four-four, you can't do that. It's always got to have a majority be the county commissioners. Then it says a majority, a majority of that board constitutes a quorum. And unlike the local Board of Equalization, it'll say, um, a majority of the local board constitutes a quorum, and then it goes on and says, a ma, a majority of the quorum may take action. So if you had three, uh, local board members that constitute a quorum, two of them could vote and win that vote. You don't need all three. In the consolid, I didn't see that same language in the consolidated board statute, it just says a majority of that board constitutes a quorum, and then it's silent. And so I'm going to take that to mean kind of how the county commission does, you know, when there's a quorum of you that meet, all three of you have to agree, there isn't such a thing as a two-one vote passing a motion. So there's nuances. Um, yeah, I think we've covered quite a bit of those nuances, and I guess it's, uh, and I know you're going to hear shortly a, a different, uh, agenda item on changing some legislation related to Board of Equalization, but, um, I'll stand for any more questions, but that's about what I can offer at this point.
Mr. Chair, so Jay, if we did the consolidation, who would, would it be the commission that would select, uh, who they want from the school board, and the commission would select from, who would do the selection of this board?
It doesn't say that, it just, it just says, uh, you shall have members and, and, uh, and, uh, the, the consolidated group can say how many, so it doesn't, doesn't say the county commission's in charge of setting everything up. It basically says everybody's sharing resources, expenses, and I'm assuming you'd have to have, uh, some meetings where you go, hey, how many people should we have on this? We know that we got to represent the majority. Um, I'm assuming, um, you, City of Rapid City, you can pick your one or two, whatever that number is, and the school district, you pick your one or two. Uh, it doesn't, that I recall, it doesn't say anything in there about the county shall pick, I, I doubt it. I think it's probably up to, to those entities that are joining to form this consolidated board.
But if it came to the free tradition, somebody's going to have to sit there and kind of take the lead on this, I would think.
It might be us, we're, we're the one.
That's where the.
To keep things rolling and have people get their things done.
Because we have to pick a date, we have to pick a place, and, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to that.
Yeah. That's what I thought. I always thought it was a good idea to consolidate it, but then there's a lot of places and parts, but I also would like to hear from the public and what they think on that consolidation, um, and what that entails. Um, to save them time, and, and the city's right, I agree, because it just keeps, you know, you just pass a buck, is, is what usually happens. Um, and I was on the city, that's why I know that, so not trying to say anything bad about the city. So the other thing is, I'd like to hear from the Equalization Office, um, bottom line, this is their department, they're going to know better than all of us. Um, Gordon, any ideas, or even if this could come from something that you guys would write a letter or something to us, or something that we knew, Gordon, that great idea, or this, this is what we think or how it would work, or if you guys want to move forward, what's the best suggestion?
Yeah, Gordon Wendell, Deputy Director of Equalization. Um, we would be perfectly okay with consolidated board. Um, some of the reasons that he gave, uh, Mr. Ainsley, it would allow more time for the public, and it would allow more time for our staff. The only thing I see, uh, just looking at the laws, um, going through them, some of the stuff Jay talked about, it sounds like you would still end up having two Boards of Equalization. You would have the consolidated board to deal with the city, and then you would have to still have the county board, because the city can't vote on the county appeals. So it sounds to me like the county has ended up doing twice as much work, because you're, you guys are going to have to have two boards instead of just the one. Um, and as far as the composition of the board, right now, the city, you know, they sign up, they have the days, okay, so-and-so will sign up this day for the boards, and, and, uh, so I assume the same thing would apply, whoever signs up, and you guys do the. the same thing would apply, whoever signs up, and you guys would do the same thing. I can sign up on Tuesday, you can sign up on Wednesday, but you would still need three members of the board if it was a five-member board. But yeah, we're okay with it. We're good with it. I've talked with Shannon about it. It's no problem for us. It's just I see the county having twice as much work.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hagcock, do you have a follow-up?
Yes. So, and one thing I like is that, being on the city board, it felt like, okay, that it didn't really mean anything. Didn't understand all the process a lot of times, and with our staff there at least, and for their sake as representing the city, whether... I don't know if they can put different cities instead of just, you know, Rapid City. Can they put Wall, or how that works? Jake would have to figure that out. Or school systems. Why I say that is because the explanation that we're given and the process in which we're basically educated, I think, is very positive for the school boards and the cities moving forward on the equalization process. Does that make sense? Because when I went there, you don't get... Okay, you don't get what we have here in Pennington County for equalization office on those presentations. And then you always say, "I'll just be up straight." We're not... They're going to go change it anyway. So maybe if they were more educated, or there was a process in which equalization, and that would take more work for you guys, but it also would educate the cities and the schools better about the county's role and what all this difference makes for us, so...
Yeah. Did you have a comment?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We actually did do that this year, that Shannon did come to two different city council committee hearings, so that he was able to give a presentation about the entire process. We had hoped that that would help with the education process, and I think it did some. But with that, it still was... I'm not going... I don't think they're as familiar as county commissioners with the process. And I don't know any amount of presentations by Shannon would be able to change that, just because that's truly what...
Yeah.
One of your primary roles. Another point, though, that I do want to bring up is that the vast majority of the determinations by the local board end up being appealed by either, you know, Shannon to you or the property owners themselves. And so while you would see a few more, there are very few that are truly just determined at the local board. Most of them you end up seeing ultimately anyway. And we did not see that statute regarding the equal representation. I apologize about that. So we don't dispute that.
And Dan, or Mr. Ainsley, I agree with a lot of your... What you're saying, but I also understand that people are not getting it's about the budgets that drop property taxes.
Yeah.
If your budgets are high, your property taxes are going to keep going up. And I think if you're elected or not elected from that, which we found out unfortunately with the eastern part of the state or otherwise, that they're having a summer study on it, and Shannon keeps saying it's about budgets. And if we have that education, and there's consequences to those actions on those budgets, people might start listening a little bit better to equalization and understanding that that process is not just about your, you know, for elected officials, that it means it's a huge difference, and we know that for property owners. So anything... I'm not against looking into this, because like I said, anything that we could do to educate the school system and the municipalities on this education of property taxes, and then in this process at the beginning, we also will be here, and we will have them understand our side as well. When you're separate, like I said, it's just like, whatever, they're just going to change it. We'll just say yes, because they're going to be in their district, and they're going to say yes, that kind of thing, and they're going to fight for it. And then so, "I'll just be up straight." Our equalization office feels like sometimes it's a waste of time. And I thought it was as a commissioner, and so I had talked to some equalization, because they're not really understanding, they just want to make sure their voters are taken care of in that sense. So education is everything for me, and anything we could do different to help this process for people to have an understanding, and that the public also is represented in a way that they don't feel like they're, "Okay, you guys don't care," because they come to us and say, "You guys don't care anyway what they said." So there's got to be some give and take in there in order for us to get people educated on how much those property taxes make a difference. So that's my two cents on some of that, so...
Okay. Before I go to you, Ron, I'm going to...
I've never been to a city board, but is it just one night, or how many hearings?
This year, I think it was about... There were three days, Monday and Tuesday were pretty much all day, you know, eight to noon, and then there would be different council members that came in, one to five. And it was Monday and Tuesday, and I think Wednesday morning, we might have had one more on Thursday or Friday.
So then, just for Rapid City, it could conceivably be three evenings or three sessions for the commission, and the city, and the Rapid City School Board.
It very well could be, but again, most of those that the local board heard ultimately came to you anyway.
Right. I'm just trying to...
Yeah.
Look at how this could... If it became reality, the... What the commission could be looking at as far as the time to do the... And there again, if Hill City says, "I want to be on board," then would we do that? Could they be right there with the mix with Rapid City, and then we'd have to switch school superintendents or whatever? I'm just looking at all the different possibilities.
There you go. My comment is, Dan, as I'm like, "We both shared on the city," and I feel your frustration, and I've heard your frustration from the mayor, especially over the last one. And it is frustration, but it's... From what I understand, it was part of the process, the city needed to be aware of what's going on from the property owners, just as well as the county does. And that was part of the process. Is it frustrating? Absolutely, because your city council people, not all of them are educated on property values and assessments and how that's going, and so a lot of them don't want to look at that. I mean, quite frankly, I sat on them for four years, and the best year I had was when Mayor Hanks was there, because he was a real estate guy and an assessor, and he could explain things to everybody that was sitting around us. And so that's where it's frustrating for your council member, and trying to get them lined up to show up is a difficult thing, too. But at this point, I would be supportive, continue to so the commission can get more information and be able to talk to people, not only constituents, but also the legal staff, is they going to make our meetings go from six days a month to 12?
Twenty.
Twenty? You know what? That's a lot of burden on us to appease one party that has to do their share, too. You know what I'm saying? So I think we need to have those discussions, and those discussions have been going on. I mean, it was no more than a couple of years ago, we thought about the consolidated also. That wasn't... There was just some discussions, it could be community members, not just professionals who were educated in assessments and so forth. So I think the discussion's there, and, you know, I applaud you for one, sticking up for the constituents and saying, "Hey, this is a step that's frustrating to me." But there's also part of the education pieces, if I'm right, they could bypass the city and just come straight to us also. It might...
A city appeal has to go through the city first.
I thought some could not appeal through the city and just come straight to us. They may have to appeal, but they don't have to show up.
Yeah. We'll do a deal where, I guess, we've got to call them a read-through, where we'll say, "Well, the city essentially will read it through, has no change, and then it comes to you guys." So they don't really do anything with it, the property owner doesn't show up or anything, and then it comes here, and then we kind of deal with it here. A lot of times that happens right at the end of the process. We don't have enough time to deal with it. We've got, you know, hundreds of appeals there, and we don't have time to go and look at the house, do a real thorough analysis, and so we said, "Well, just put it through the city, and then it'll give us some time to look at it. We'll come out and look at your house and give us some time to make adjustments, so then we can come in front of you and make, you know, intelligent conversation out of it, I guess."
So my recommendation would probably be to continue for at least a month, so we can have...
Mr. Chair.
That's my thoughts. That gives the both sides time. I mean, Dan, you can definitely come back in, but we'll have discussions with the mayor.
Sure.
I think our commission, we're short one, give them the time to look into this. I mean, it's... This commission cares about it. They really do.
Sure.
I think I seen him met.
I guess what I was thinking is that maybe we should, to keep the ball rolling, get more information, is that somebody from the commission, somebody from the city, director of equalization, somebody from the school board, sit down and just, you know, just try to work on... Figure out how this would work, and then make a recommendation to the commission, just keep everything, like I said, moving. So I'd be more unwilling to be part of that if we wanted to do that.
Chair, actually, with the state's attorney, the equalization, I think, and the city, just going back and forth and figure out if there is a solution, and then what's... What are the consequences, meaning our actions and what those actions might be, meaning is it going to be a positive? What's the positive about this, and what's the negative? And is the negative easily to resolve, or is it something that we're going to... We'll all decide after we see the other part of it, that we know this isn't going to work? I think once you do that as individuals, on anything you do, you start figuring out, "What was I thinking?" So... Or you come back and go, "Wow, this can work." Equalization, I'll tell you, with Shannon and Gordon, they have a good team, and I think they'll be up straight. And if you know Shannon, yeah, he's going to tell you a great idea, or he'll find other answers. And Gordon's been in there a long time as well, so either one of them for trying to find some of that solution, and what that work takes from them, and what that work takes from the city, or even the schools. By the way, you need the school system in there with you, too, so Jay's good at finding a solution as well. So again, I'm with what Ram just said. Let's... And Lloyd, take this a little bit slower, but don't just let it go by the wayside. Let's work together and see if we can figure out something that'll work, because for the constituents, that's what you do it for, and the education of our communities, so they know what, and when, and what we do is important, and they don't just say, "We just pass it off," and you know what I mean? Or, in the city's case, that commissioners just don't listen to us anyway, so we just pass it off. So, anyway, thank you, Dan, for coming, and hopefully we can figure out... I don't know if Shannon's office initiates that meeting, or your office initiates that, Dan, but I'd say reach out to each other and then come back with us, to us, and say, "This is what we found."
Sure.
Really good, or you're like, "You've got to be kidding me." Thank you for coming to me, Dan.
Thanks.
So Gordon, you look like you wanted to say something.
That's right, I do. Yeah, I think it's a good idea from the standpoint of the taxpayer, and that they would only have to attend one board, whether attending to properties alone at the city level. You know, our objective will always, of course, is to try and have market value, so then they come back here. It would definitely be an advantage for the taxpayer to only have to attend one board. As I said before, I guess the only disadvantage is you still don't have just one board. You're still going to have two boards. One, you're going to have the consolidated board to deal with the city issues, the other one has to be a county board to deal with county issues.
Well, from what I hear, I'm looking at this, should probably be continued to the August 20th meeting, and that'd give Dan, our representative from the city, to sit down with Pennington County's equalization to hammer out some stuff, and then they could review with legal, and then come back on the 20th and have the pros and cons of it presented to the commission in order to make a decision. I think there's pros and there's cons, and I think the commission needs to hear both sides of it. And then you... City's going to be involved, and so you'll know the pros and cons, too, so I think that's a good solution.
That'd be my motion with a follow-up after their second, please.
Motion by Hagcock.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter, and a follow-up by Ms. Hagcock.
What I think is not two boards, I mean, you still have two boards, but you could have the board, kind of like we do the... What do you call them? For nonprofits and things like that, we have like... Basically, we vote on all of that stuff, so what you do is you'd have a board that you started with, right, that was consolidated, and just like any other time, then our board would take the next step and do county. So you could still consolidate it, but... Meaning when there's city stuff, you could have the city and the consolidated board. I get it. And it would be two boards in one sense, but they could still sit up here. So the first five, maybe three commissioners, or two commissioners, or whatever, on the first consolidated board. And then the next one is just our county board. Like I said, I think the education and for the property owners, having that one board just coming in that one time, knowing those dates that are coming in, not that I have to figure out when the city has it, when the school has it, when this... It's just, I believe, a win-win if we can find the solution and still not make your office have to do a lot. I think our equalization office gives us these huge books, so they do a lot of work. So anything that... That solution with the positive of helping and moving forward, I think you could do it. So like I said, if you just had the board beforehand of the consolidated, it'd make it easier on you guys not having to travel and try to figure out the schedules as well of where you have to go to. So again, I'm not against this, but I'm also willing to listen about those pros and cons, so...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
So I understand where we're going with this, but I think that whether it's me or any other commission member, that one of the commission members should be involved with this, because the burden's going to fall on the commission at the very end. So I think we need to have somebody from the commission be there for representation.
Yes. Agreed.
I have no problems with Mr. Ross.
I'll be more unhappy, just because I've got some experience in real estate appraisal.
The consolidated board, I think, has been talked about for quite a bit, so it's just bringing back the pros and cons and hammering it out and getting the city's input and so forth, I think is good. But I think, yeah. You can have more than one commissioner, or even at city council people, so...
I think it's workable, and I think it's a good idea. We just have to dive into the weeds a little bit to work out the details.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor? And Dan, you're okay with?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I'd be proud for this and for the resolution.
Yeah.
Okay? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. So your second item is the resolution to allow the appointed members, and we continue that to the 20th also, if I get a motion.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Ross Connect.
Mr. Chair.
On item number eight, Mr. Lester.
So we're just going to go ahead and move item eight to the next board of commission meeting without...
No, the 20th.
20th.
August 20th.
August 20th?
Yeah.
Because it'll be in line with what...
Yeah.
They're going to be talking about?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, the only caveat with that is resolutions are due to the state association by July 31st. Board consideration by the full membership.
Bye.
Pretty soon.
Can't go another month if the board wishes to have this moved forward through the state association.
Oh, through the state.
Yeah. Commissioner Drews said that he would present this to the resolutions committee in August. If it moves past that, then it would go to the full membership at the annual convention in September. So unfortunately, this one, if the board is interested in this idea, we cannot continue this one.
Thank you. Good point.
I'll drop my motion.
Ms. Hagcock withdraws her motion. And Ross Connect, you okay with?
Yep.
Okay, so the motion's withdrawn?
Yes. Just one... So to approve the resolution to allow for the option, so we're just looking at the option. If we approved it, and then find out later that it's a good or bad thing, I'd like that... It'd be nice to have discussion with the state or the people representing in the county, so...
So thank you, Holly, for bringing that up. So item number eight, instead of continuing that, I have no motion on the floor for that?
Chair, I would move to approve the resolution to allow for the option of appointed county board of equalization.
Moved by Hagcock.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I was thinking there was going to be... I was thinking there was going to be more discussion on it before making a motion on it. I personally cannot support this and I'll tell you why. This says that essentially we would have the option to appoint a board. So ultimately it's taking it out of our hands. State statute does say it's, it's supposed to be in our hands. But the other piece of that is putting our, our name on this, or at least I feel putting my name on this, is saying that we can't impartially have a hearing and to protect our citizens' rights. That's what we're charged with when we sit as the, as the equalization board. And I don't think that this sends a great message to the legislature or anyone by saying that maybe we can't be impartial, so we need to put it in someone else's hands. We are charged to be impartial. We get elected and that's what we're supposed to do. So we're supposed to be fair and impartial with all of our citizens when they come up here, even if it goes against what we personally believe. So I'm not going to vote for it for that very specific reason because we're just saying we may not be able to be impartial. So now we have to use bureaucracy and appoint individuals to be impartial, which ultimately even appointing individuals may not be impartial because we're going to have to vote on those individuals to appoint them. So I think this, to me, is saying that we can't do our job if we decide to opt for that. So I'm going to be a no on this one.
Sure.
Ms. Hagcock.
So I guess I don't see it that way. I see if we have the board ahead of time, we're still part of that first board and then we have to still do our job after that with our county, just like we did before. So we wouldn't be impartial because we still, as Gordon said, we'd still have to be up here as the county board, doing the same responsibility we had before. It'd just be nice, we could be helpful as county commissioners with states, or state, schools and cities on some of this on education. So I'm saying that the, the board that would be put forward first would be, I don't know if Jay said we have to have a county commissioners plus the city and the school board with us at first. And then it's just like Gordon said, then you have to have a whole county board, meaning only on county because the, the city, no, the city and the schools cannot vote on county commissioned properties. Am I correct, Gordon?
But that's not what this is talking about, actually. This does not, that's not what this addresses.
Okay.
Yeah, he's talking about the, the other resolution, the pending county resolution to allow for the option of appointing the county board of equalization. So the county would appoint people to be the board of equalization, no longer be a part of the process. So that's what Commissioner Lassiter is talking about versus the consolidated board, which is what you're talking about.
Okay. Because that's what I was, I guess when I was looking at it for the resolution, that's what I was thinking we were going to move forward on.
That's where we are.
But it would still, okay.
Hold on, Ms. Chair, I think she might be confused. You think we're still talking about the consolidated board?
Yes.
We're not talking about the consolidated board. We are talking about changing the board of equalization to take us off of it, potentially take us off of it and put appointed members from the community.
The resolution.
That's what the resolution is. That's what we're talking about. We're not talking about the consolidated board. Totally two different topics.
Okay, now I get what you're saying. And I should have known that because we talked about this before, before when we couldn't do it. So the other issue, so we can do the other legally if we decide to call it consolidate. This would just be taking it literally out of the hands of, okay, so then what would be the point of working with, with the city and the, the school board and stuff? Okay, I get what you're saying now. Thank you for reiterating that, Gordon and Travis. Okay, I'm not in favor of that because we've just, we've seen over and over again that when people come in and we appoint boards to represent us, that they get mad when we do not decide ourselves as commissioners because we are in their districts and we are the responsibility for them to speak for them. So Travis is right and I apologize if I'm not getting that at first. And I appreciate Gordon for reiterating that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
Just out of clarification then, since you were thinking it was a different thing, do you want to maintain your motion since you're the motion maker or do you want to withdraw it? I'm figuring now that you understand it, I just want to make sure I ask that question.
Thank you. I withdraw it.
Motion withdrawn. Seconders?
Second withdrawn, but let's just recap so we know exactly where we all are.
I'm going to read, oh, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I, I get what Mr. Lester is saying. You know, that part of the resolution is says a member, whereas a member appointed to the board of equalization should include individuals who have work experience and other qualifications in property valuation, appeals, appraisal, real estate, et cetera, providing for fair and impartial evaluation of appeals. That's where I get it. But I think yours is up higher. The commissioners of elected officials may not have, no, whereas it can be difficult for an elected official to act fairly and impartially in this capacity. I think we've, I think what that's saying is in some, some way you're voting on property values and so forth. And, and I, I see where, what you're saying, Travis, but I think there also could be the perception that it benefits you as a commissioner to be doing it if you had somebody, as I talked about earlier, not city, school, a separate board, a professional was doing it. They have no interest in, in what's happening. You know, they're, they're looking at the professional side of it and not, I think you're going to be, there's always going to be that perception of impartialness if you're a city, you're a school, come. There's, I mean, you're representing them full-time, so you can, the perception could be there. And then what this is saying is there is some, could be some perceptions, not saying that, and by doing this, you'd take that impartial, perception out of it. That's, that's where I stand with the resolution.
Chair. So I agree with Lloyd too. So there's both sides to it, but the bottom line comes to the perception from the citizens. So they want us representing them. And if they think we're, you already know, I've seen people up here and I, I can see the impartial sometimes on people. So depending on their districts. So I get that point, what Lloyd is saying. And if it's my district, I'm going to fight harder kind of. And that shouldn't be the way it is. It should be impartial. So I get both sides of it, but the bottom line comes down to it. We represent the people and, and they afforded us to do this job for a reason because they could feel that we could be impartial and we could do the right thing by them or just people in general. Same with our, our staff. So hopefully, I get both sides, but the bottom line comes to that, that we represent the people. And I've seen it over and over again on committees as we have in the past, if you think about it, commissioners, where they say, you know what I mean? Why are you having committee decide what you guys in the long run are the final decision? And we've had that. Some of those areas caused us some major issues when we did not vote the way of the, the committees. So I agree with Travis in this, in the bottom line, even though I'm listening to Commissioner Corey's, his truth.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I see exactly where you're coming from on this. Just to, I guess the other side of it is if you were to hire three appraisers to be the board, you have three experts on the board talking about values. That would be the advantage. Disadvantage, the key word, hire, you would have to hire somebody. You're not going to be able to just appoint somebody for this. I don't think you're going to find three appraiser who are going to want to sit on a board of equalization and not get paid for it. The other point I, I wanted to make was the only thing about this resolution, it doesn't help the other situation at all because this deals strictly with the county. You would appoint, point three appraisers or whomever to be on the county board of equalization. We still have, the city's a separate thing. So that wouldn't change anything there. So this is, okay, the, we're taking care of the county situation if you consider it that, but you still have two boards, city board, county board.
So Holly, what was that date again?
July 31st, sir.
By July 31st. I guess I'd go to the board. I mean, I, I think this is something that's not new to us that's come up. So, you know, I don't see the, myself, the, the resolution of being pressing except for what Dan had said, you want, would like it approved before November 20, November 12th.
No, Mr. Chair, that's two separate things.
That's two separate.
Yeah. So I guess from my perception of the board, I would suggest making a motion to deny the resolution for appointing boards or appointing members to the board of equalization and put this conversation to rest and still continue on the consolidated board researching that option.
I agree.
Chair.
Okay, I heard Mr. Lester.
My motion would be to deny the, the proposed resolution allowing appointed board members to the board of equalization.
Second.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Hagcock. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Just a question for Commissioner Lassiter. As written, this could be amended per se that it might be agreeable, but you're just saying the way it's written today that you get some concerns?
Well, I have a lot of concerns. One, the, the state legislature basically established that we are the ones who are to do this. We're coming in and saying, we don't want to do that because we feel like we can't be impartial. I have a problem with that. That's saying that we as elected officials who commit to our constituents that we're going to be impartial on issues, we're saying that we're going to be impartial or we feel we might be impartial. So we need to put somebody else in there. Second, we are elected to make the difficult decisions. We're dealing with budget right now. We're fixing to tell some department heads, there's some difficult decisions to be made and we're going to have to tell you what you're not going to spend money on. That's what we get elected to do. I don't think we should be asking the state legislature to say, hey, we don't want to do our job. So can we appoint a bureaucracy board to do our job for us? And then we can say, all right, well, that's the board. They said it. We're going to, we're going to do it. So that's why I have a lot of, I don't know if I could come to an agreement on anything with appointing a board that takes the responsibility designated from the state statute out of our hands and even saying that I want it taken out of our hands because that's the reason why we run, is to be a part of the, the process to fix the problems, not just because we want to be impartial or unfair. That's just my opinion on it. And I would find it very difficult to support something that says that we're impartial and that we want to take it out of our hands that the state, that the state legislature said is supposed to be in our hands.
Chair.
Thank you for that clarification. That was all I was asking for.
He was just asking a question of another commissioner.
Just, just one quick, if I could, Commissioner. The, the bottom line is I believe that Gordon and Lloyd, what they're trying to say, and maybe I shouldn't speak for Commissioner or Gordon, but do I think that professionals that know how to do equalization and that we need to be better at educating and how that process works? Because if you're new, I'll just tell you, it, it's crazy. Like if you've been here for a while, it's, we, we got it figured out and how that process works and how you equalize and do that kind of thing. That's, and you know that because you have to train people a long time. So what you're saying, Gordon, is totally straight up. Do I think people that are educated more in the process of equalization, meaning properties and they do these things for a living, appraisals, different things, to a certain extent, they might know more than what we do. And, and I don't think the impartiality ever comes out of anything that I've ever seen, whether if you're on a committee or not. But I also, the bottom line is, and you already know, Gordon, we're elected to do this job and Travis is right. And anything you do, it could be partial or impartial. Doesn't matter if you're elected or not. So we're listening to what you're saying on the professionals, but I also agree that we took this job and, and we need to educate ourselves better if, if, if we're not doing that job efficiently and effectively. So I'm agreeing with, like I said, both sides have good arguments and I like them both, but.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep the meeting going.
I'm sorry.
We voted on the item and.
Yeah, it's just important for the citizens.
It is. I think, thanks for you guys' input. It was a question and thanks for your answering Mr. Ross Connect's questions and everybody's input. But so we, motion was not to approve it. So we appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks, Gordon, for your.
Gordon.
Next, we come up to.
Have we voted?
Yeah, I voted. We voted.
This thing's getting a little.
To deny it.
He jumped in and asked a question of another commissioner in a minute.
Okay.
He was nice enough to let me speak. Thank you.
So, next, we're going to have a performance report from Jennifer, from the executive board of Black Hills Council of Local Governments.
And we'll recognize Jennifer.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. My name is Jennifer Sitzma, Executive Director for Black Hills Council of Local Governments. And I'm here to present the annual performance report for our organization. Just kind of disclaimer, all of the information in this report is specific to January 1st through December 31st. So as we go through this, there's many things that say they're pending that have now been resolved or we know the answer to, but those will be included in next year's report. So with this, last year was the first year that our organization had done this in a while. I brought it back because I feel like it's really important for our members to be able to have something in writing to see what they're getting for their membership. The first part of this is just our current, or it was the 2023 board and the executive board members. So obviously that's changed since January. And then our staff as well, and we've had a few changes there. The first part is an, is an introduction, talks about the services we provide and then where our funding comes, comes from. If you look at the overall budget in 2023, our expenses totaled $497,000. And of that, only 26.5% of our revenues come from our membership dues. So we always are doing work to subsidize the cost on our members so that we're bringing in funds from other revenue sources to ensure that we can keep the membership dues low. A couple of highlights for 2023. If you look, we had a total of 70 applications in our region that were submitted and prepared. And our successful proposals resulted in over $110 million of outside funding that was secured from January 23 to December of 2023. We also have received an additional $232,000 in direct funding that comes from other contracts that aren't specifically covered under membership dues. And then we're always working with our regional economic development partners. And so within our office building, we have Black Hills Community Economic Development and the Small Business Development Center. All of our organizations together support each other and their work resulted in 94 jobs retained and 50 new jobs. And the Community Economic Development Group has a loan, loan portfolio of over 70 million and a total of 121 loans. Those are loans for new businesses, new business startups, or just financing for existing businesses that need to expand. I'm going to go back to the overall funding total. So when you look at the return on investment that I'll get into for each county, this dates back to the year 2000. We've actually been an organization since 1972. But with being new to the organization just a few years ago, I was only confident in the numbers I could find dating back to 2000. So that's kind of where I cut off. There was assistance obtained long before I was part of the organization. But total, at this point, we're over $621 million that has been secured in outside funding for our region, which includes nine counties and 21 municipalities. And then I guess if you wanted to break that down into what it represents per person, you'd be looking at about $3,000 or $3,144 per person. And that's based off the 2020 census data. And if you look at overall for our region, you're looking at a return on investment of $358 to one. So I'm going to, we have information for each county, but I'm going to flip over to Pennington County because that's probably what you're most interested in. But you can always take a look at this. This report is on our website. So if you want to know specifically or, or what we're doing in other counties, you're always welcome to take a closer look at that. So if you look at the return on investment for Pennington County since the year 2000, assistance obtained as of December 31st, 2023 was $300,000. assistance obtained as of December 31, 2023 was $311,786,927, and the total dues paid is $703,000. That's not specific to Pennington County. That includes our other two members, which includes Rapid City and Buck Solder. So the return on investment overall for Pennington County is $443 to one. If you look at the next section of this, this is just applications that were submitted or being worked on in 2023. So if you compare this report to last year, this list is a lot shorter because of, we had included three years, because I brought this report back. It hadn't been done under previous direction of our organization. So total for 2023 dollars secured for projects, $60 million, just over $60 million, and a lot of those now, we know, have been awarded. So a lot of those that say pending received their funding in early 2024, so that'll be captured in next year's report. And then the next section of the report talks about work activities that we do, the things that take up our time kind of all day, every day, other than application development. And these are just different work activities that, they're kind of hard to summarize, but I like for my members to know that there's a lot of things we're doing. Securing the dollars for a project is actually a small part of what we do. The administration of those funds is what is time consuming. So we assist with getting organizations registered in SAM so they're eligible. We get them registered in the online programs for submitting apps like FEMA Go, USDA is an online app, EDA is an online application, grants.gov. We also provide assistance in the Davis Bacon administration for any project with federal funds. There's a requirement to review and interview payroll and interview employees that have worked on the project. And then we also work with assistants in doing all of the draws and managing the funding ledgers. That's probably a very short list of the things that we're doing. We also do mapping projects for people, so if we have fire departments or road districts or a small subdivision that is actually registered as a government entity formally, we can provide maps for them. We've done some ETJs on maps for, that says Puma, which should not be, that should not be you guys. Looks like I have an error in my report. I apologize. But we had, we had done that, so it probably should say Hill City. Anyway, this is kind of the gist of the report. I'm happy to answer any questions about work activities that we're working on or if you have any specific questions about projects. So currently, we have 35 projects in Pennington County, and I think last year, there was a question on, you know, how many of those are Rapid City or Buck Solder. I showed that five of those are for Rapid City and six of those are for Buck Solder. So of the 35 that we're working on, you know, about 11 of those are specific to other members that are not Pennington County.
Chair.
Thanks, Jennifer. I just want to make note that this is a performance report and informational only, and I just wanted to highlight that I'd seen you provide technical assistance for Rapid City Fire Department and Rapid Valley Fire, do some for the fire departments, too.
Yes, so under the county's membership, we offer services if we get calls or assistance for technical assistance, whether it's mapping or SAM registration, because a lot of times they are volunteer. Sometimes they just need help getting reset or they've let their SAM expire. So fire departments are one entity, but we've gotten some calls for road districts and water districts or community improvement districts or HOAs. A lot of those entities can qualify for water and sewer infrastructure funding. So there was kind of an oddball. We did get a request last year from Medicine Mountain Scout Camp, and they were an eligible entity to apply for funding through DNR. They received funding for their project, but it was an entirely loan, and so they ended up reverting those funds. But they're kind of one of our entities that, again, they needed assistance. We provided, we helped them through the process of getting their applications submitted. They received funding, but ultimately decided to pay for the project with local funds.
Okay. Ms. Hancock.
Chair.
So, okay, help me understand this, and I should have called you ahead of time. So for dues, you have dues paid $143,086 from Butte County. What do you, did you do the dues and how you're...
So there's, that's total dues paid from...
January 1st till December 31st?
No, for 20 years, for 23 years. So that's the total dues paid for 23 years. If you want, I can send you the breakdown of the dues for this for just, for just 2024. So I'm in, let me go back to your number, so I'm referring to the same thing. So yeah, that $143 in Butte County, let's see, they have, I'm going to screw this up. They either have Bison or Buffalo, so they have Bison. The Bison is, no, that's Harding, sorry. So Butte County has Bell, Manuel, Vale, all of them. Bell is the only dues-paying member because entities under 1,000 in population do not pay dues. So in Pennington County, Hill City doesn't pay dues, Keystone doesn't pay dues, Wall doesn't pay dues, New Underwood doesn't pay dues, but we still provide them services because Pennington County is a member.
Representative. So what are, what are we paying at this point? Is it 25 or 50? I can't remember.
You're at 58.6, I think, but I can pull, oh, actually, I don't have my computer. Yeah, sorry, that's, the dues is a different discussion, but there, so I think last year you guys were at, I could be at 56.5, and there was an increase of about $1,900 for Pennington County, for all of them. But that was based off of CPI, so 3.4% on the Department of, the Bureau of Statistics. So that's what we use for that. And that increase is the only increase we've increased on dues since 2010. If, a reminder is that the reason why Pennington County saw large increases is because there was an agreement that was not in writing that was made when you guys came back on. So for many years, services were provided in Pennington County, but you weren't paying us dues. So you came back in in 19 on a reduced dues, and now you're at the same place where all of our other members are.
Okay, and that's why you changed it last year. Me and you were confused, or maybe I just was confused, and I was trying to figure it out. We were with some of the changes.
So last year, you were the only entity that saw it because I recognized that our formulas were not being administered to all of our members fairly, and I needed to correct that before I could ever talk about raising dues, because if we had members that were still at a discounted rate, there's not fairness in that.
Okay.
So now everybody, last year, everybody, you were the last entity that was not on 52 cents per capita, so last year was just establishing the standard. Again, I was not inclined to start raising dues if we weren't doing things uniformly within our own organization on how we were administering dues.
And last year, I apologize, and I should have been a little bit more...
You're fine. I'm here to answer the hard questions. I feel like as an organization, I am intentionally transparent. I bring everything to my board. One of the things I want my members to understand is you are, like, you have two commissioners that are on my board making these decisions. So if there's a raise or a decrease in dues, that comes straight from you all, except there's not five of you, there's two of you. And so we have to sit around and make the same hard decisions at our board table as you do, but just know that you are part of those decisions. So whoever Pennington County chooses to put on my board, you are part of the decision of whether or not there's going to be an increase to dues or not. And I provide my board the information, and it's their job, you know, to make the decision on what we're doing with dues.
I get, with, when it came to last year, I didn't comprehend, because two people represented us, and we moved it forward, and I didn't know anything about it, and maybe I wasn't getting it, maybe I didn't see it, I don't know. But I also was listening to our commission manager on some of this because it made sense. And then when we both figured out some of it, that how the process works, to a certain extent, it just didn't seem, it's like, okay, how could you approve this beforehand? Well, you're right, after looking and understanding it a little bit better. Did I ever, in this justification of anything I said last year, was it because you weren't doing your job or you guys didn't give us a return on our investment? Never was about that. I just didn't get the process. So on how we paid the dues and how that process was moving forward. So Jen, you guys do a great job. And then, once I looked at it, I looked at it thoroughly, I also get it. Plus, I also see how many different entities you represent in Pennington County. So you're doing a lot more work for us than a lot of the counties, because we're a bigger county with more cities, so.
Sure, I mean, I, I actually, you know, I struggle a little bit. You know, you look at Bennington, Bennett County, for example, and we didn't have a lot of work activity there. I never want the perception for my members to be that it's because of distance, you know? I don't want them to think that if we were located in Bennett County, there would be more work there. But I do think that if you look at the amount of work being done versus the amount of dues being paid, you will see that, for example, I think Bennett is in, I think they're around 3,000, so maybe 1,500 they pay in dues. That's reflective of, there's probably going to be less work to do there because there's less people. We're a planning district, so we deal with economic development and community development. And if there's a lot of growth, you're going to see a lot more activity from our side in that. So sometimes I feel a little bad that we're doing less in some of the other ones, but they also tend to need less. They don't have road districts or subdivisions or even rural water systems, so there's just less work to be done.
But I also remember seeing you back down because, or do less, because if they needed you, you would do just as much, from what I've seen, and had looked at some of your projects, then what you're saying is, I see they're less, but if they needed you, just from seeing the smaller counties and what you've done, you would move forward in getting that done.
So, yes, so far, we haven't had to turn down work. We've had to be honest with people on timeframe, so we have a growing list of requests for comprehensive planning services and zoning ordinance services. And because we have a very small staff, and we're actually down one because we had to retire and one take a position at the city of Rapid, but we do our best to not have to turn down services. And especially with the small entities that are seeking grant funds for a project or their needs, we don't want any, we don't ever want an entity to feel like they can't apply for something because they don't have the ability to do it themselves. So so far, we haven't had to turn down any of those requests. But I think right now, I mean, we are having to tell people there's an extended timeline for certain services. We want to help you. Example, the city of Spearfish needed a comprehensive plan. We did tell them, we can't meet the deadlines. You need to get this job done, so you're probably better off hiring a private consultant to do that. That costs a lot more, though, quite a bit more.
I've seen that. I've seen that by our members. Thank you, Jen, for your explanation.
Thank you, Jen. Mr. Roskin.
Jennifer, I see one of your projects, completed the Hill City Ambulance Environmental Review for USDA funding. Just gave an update, that's under construction now. They were drilling the pylons yesterday, so.
I think they found through that process that there was unsuitable soil, so I think they did have to do, the pylons are a result of that. But that is one of those, that we didn't do that free, but they were able to utilize our services and at a discounted rate. So I think that was a $2,500 contract. The environmental review for USDA, I think, ended up being an 85 or 90-page report. So it is quite a bit of work for a volunteer entity or somebody who doesn't have full-time staff.
Just wanted to give you an update, though.
Thank you.
In case you don't get the Hill City...
Any further questions for Jennifer? Thanks, Jennifer.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You know, next we have on our agenda is items from the auditor and all you've got in your packet here today of what we asked for. We got it this morning, and our special work session is Thursday, July 18th at 8:00 a.m. So I just wanted to bring that to light. Is there any more information from the commission for Cindy or staff for Thursday's meeting? Is still your thunder?
Yeah. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. No, we have everything ready as far as was directed for Thursday's meeting. So unless there is something else that somebody has a question on, suggestions that they would like to see, I think we're ready to move over to the meeting on Thursday.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Is that the packet?
Commissioner Hancock, I put yours right on top of that very large pile.
Thank you. That's a little bit homework.
I appreciate that. One thing, Lloyd, thank you, Jerelyn, and anybody that helped get that together, because that's a lot of work, but a lot of printing, I should say, and a lot of work from them to have to do that, and I appreciate that. It's nice to be able to look at some of that information, so thank you.
Is there any further requests for staff for Thursday's? Mr. Laster.
Man, I just, I've looked at it, and I've kind of gone over it, got some numbers, and, you know, I'm guessing all the department heads are going to be at the meeting on the 18th? Are they going to come? Or is it more for us to have conversations? Maybe I just want to make sure I understand how that's going to unfold at that meeting particularly.
Well, I just got, I'm going to last one, too, but we will go over it. They will be here, and we can call them up with any questions that we have.
Because I sat and talked with Lindsay, I don't know, I was going to call you Lindsay, Cindy, not even close. I visited with her, and, you know, we have to make the difficult decisions of what needs to be cut, depending on what our end goal is and where we need it, where we want to sit at. And, you know, some of it might be easy, some of it's not going to be easy. But we definitely, I don't think we can put in a mindset of, and I've seen this in the past, but all departments, 1% cut, 5% cut, 10% cut. I don't think we can even approach it in that manner, because there are some departments, clearly, that only increase their budget by 0.66% or very small numbers. And so we definitely can't go into this with that mindset of broad cuts. I really would like for the department heads to really scrutinize their own budgets to figure out what really needs to be done. I mean, I understand, there's big things across the board that have to be done or that need to be done. The question is, does it have to be done now when we're in this, in this situation that we're in? But also understanding, you know, whatever we do moving forward, it's going to increase the property taxpayer, property tax bill. They're going to be unfortunately stuck with having to cut something out of their own personal budget to meet paying their tax bill. Most, some of them will, obviously some won't. So we need to keep that in mind when we're going forward, that we need to look at what can we really cut and what do we really need? So that's just my impact, or my statement on that, because when it comes down to it, there's going to be people that have to make adjustments to their budget that are property owners, and we are going to be a part of that process based on what we say we're going to spend.
I totally agree with you, Mr. Laster. And that was one of my biggest fears, that coming into budget, that we get frustrated, we're going to do mandated, non-mandated, we're going to have those discussions. To me, to throw out an option that everybody cut a certain percentage is not fair with every department, and it creates some hardship, and you're right, I think we have to go through the budgets and work with our department heads to see the best stuff that they can do and ask for input. But to throw out a percentage...
Chair.
Totally agree, each department's a little bit, you know, some only have eight people, some got four, and they're running tight, so. I have Mr. Roskin next.
And I agree, you know, we got to look at the needs and wants, but I, you know, the state's attorney, she put on a very good presentation, and, you know, to me, safety becomes something that we have to look at, too. Safety for the general public that reside in Pennington County. So we got a lot of moving parts there, but we'll see what, have a 18th place out.
Ms. Hancock.
I appreciate that. Do we have per department, the mandated rules and regs on each department? And do we have non-mandated per department, which they have put on their budgets?
They are all identified in your budget books, yes, ma'am.
And I did not. They're in the budget book or the...
Your binder. Your binder.
Okay, I thought I looked at some of that, and I didn't see a lot of the, what, like, if it's Highway Department, what are they mandated to do? I mean, if we have, are they mandated? I mean, I know their budgets are mandated, but what are they mandated? If it's equalization, or it's a department which is mandated per state law, are they mandated to do, what is their job description as a mandate? Because some of the mandate, it doesn't, like I'm saying, if we need an auditor's office, is she mandated to have twenty-five people? Is she mandated to have fourteen copyers? Is she mandated? Do you see what I'm saying? Because people were saying, they're mandated, it's ninety percent mandated. I get that. But what are you mandated to basically have? And what is actually happening in that department? And do I make a manage no to a certain extent? But some of this, if you're adding programs and you're doing things that are unmandated, that starts adding to budgets. So that's what I want to know, is what are these areas that are mandated, basically, per department in state law? And what, basically, do they have in there that's not mandated, but it's something that's a need? It's not a want. Makes sense?
Yeah, Commissioner Hancock, if you go through your budget binder in each department, you can see on there whether it's a statutorily authorized or a statutory required department. That's one conversation. The other conversation is exactly what you said. If we're required or mandated to provide a service, at what level does that service need to be provided?
That's a good word, what level.
That's another conversation. Also, in the narratives on some of the departments, they specifically list out what services they provide that are not mandated, that the board can look on each one of those as well.
Okay, and for some reason, I was looking, maybe it's in the, in the bind, in the back part?
Yeah.
And not on the papers that are showing, right, the numbers. Okay, so maybe I missed that when I was looking through them? Thank you, home.
Any further questions? Not, we'll move on, and we'll plan on the Thursday eighteenth at eight a.m.
Thank you, thank you.
Next, that brings us up to items from Highway Superintendent. Need authorization to buy tires.
Good morning, Commissioner, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. To answer your question, Chair, yes, because we oftentimes buy more than fifty thousand dollars in one fiscal year, so we have to have authorization to buy off the state bid. The state of South Dakota chooses to buy off, as it was in your memo there, the National Association of State Procurement officials, value point contract-based out of Iowa, so they end up buying off of Iowa's bid. So ultimately, we're buying off Iowa's bid, but we're buying off the South Dakota state bid because they buy off the Iowa state bid. So to give you an idea, I mean, a set of motor grader tires is probably thirty grand. So one motor grader that needs tires, and we're fifty percent of the way to our bid limit, so.
How much is that for per tire? Do you know? Happen to guess? I mean, those are like tractor tires.
Probably about three or four thousand dollars apiece, and there's six of them, so.
Okay.
Chair.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Move to authorize the Highway Department to purchase tires, tubes, and surfaces from the authorized dealers of the state of South Dakota contracts, number one seven eight seven eight, and Bridge Storm America's Tire Operation, one seven eight six three, with the Goodyear Tire River Company, or one seven eight six two, with Michelin North America Incorporated.
Oh, move.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, that brings us.
Give this one the day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Next is items from the public, is have no speaker request forms. So it moves us on to. Board of Adjustments, but I'd look for a motion to take a ten-minute break to give them time to set up.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Hancock, seconded by Laster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, look for a motion to come back into session.
So move.
Moved by Ross Connect, seconded by Laster, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Look for a motion to go into Board of Adjustments.
So move.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Ross Connect, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Good morning. Megan Talmadge Planner. Agenda item A is variant COVA twenty-four dash zero 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 six. It's to reduce a setback to a residential district for a telecommunications tower. After speaking with the applicant earlier this week, they would prefer that this item be continued to the August twentieth meeting, so staff would recommend continuing this item to the August twentieth meeting.
That'd be my motion.
Thank you.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Hancock, to continue to the next commission meeting? Any discussion? No, no discussion?
The twentieth, not the sixth.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the motion is to continue to the twentieth of August. Motion makers, was it? Seconded, okay. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. I'd look for a motion to come out of Board of Adjustments.
So move.
Moved by Laster.
Second.
Seconded by Hancock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next become two Planning Consent Agenda, and I'll recognize Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Muller, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The Planning and Zoning Consent Agenda contains the following item. Item A is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review, PUR twenty-three dash zero five. For Anco Developments LLC, it's to review a telecommunications tower in a plan unit development. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of PUR twenty-three dash zero five with five conditions.
Is there any questions for Brittany? I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the Planning and Zoning Consent Agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Hancock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Item C is Ordinance Amendment OA twenty-four dash zero nine for Pennington County. To amend section nine oh four C of the dead-end road system in the Pennington County subdivision regulations. And the reason for this is to require mitigation measures on a dead-end road system. The existing text just basically has that you can't, a dead-end road system, it cannot exceed forty lots or two miles in cumulative length. So what we are proposing is in fire protection districts, that if the subdivision occurs on a dead-end system within the boundaries of a fire protection district, a fire mitigation plan is proposed for the subdivision. If they are in a flood hazard area, that it is restricted to the forty lots, not the two miles in cumulative length. And in all cases, the dead-end road system must not exceed two miles in cumulative length. And we did add an exception, that this section does not apply to subdivisions that result in no net gain in lot density on a dead-end room system. So if they're combining lots, reducing the number of lots, then they wouldn't be required to meet the, or get a variance, essentially.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
Awesome. We long, and we talked about this, and I know I've talked about with you and Jason, it didn't make sense just to do a forty-unit room-like statement. And I always thought, like you guys, with the flood areas, I mean, that's a big concern of many people. And we already know from the flood, that people were very passionate about some of those areas. And that's why that forty unit, I think, generally came about. Fire mitigation, make sure they have an exit plan, and basically, a plan, in case there's a fire, makes sense on the forty-unit rule, instead of blanket statement all the way through, whether it be flood, fire, or whatever in that area. So what you guys did is very positive. So some of these areas that have this forty-unit rule can move forward, because they can do some of this fire mitigation and emergency management, basically, plans, and make it so they can get their subdivisions and their houses and stuff move forward. So, long time coming, and I think you guys did a great job at what you did. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions for Brittany?
Move approval.
Moved by Hancock.
Thank you.
Seconded by Laster. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Are there any items from, no items from the chair, or is there any items from the commission members to be discussed? We'll move on to committee reports. Travis.
Planning Commission, the new appointees were sworn in, and outside of that, nothing else was. It was a pretty short Planning Commission meeting, if I remember correctly. It was so short, I almost don't remember. And then, EM Users Board, some notes from that. They just, they had another cert class, they had six people, sixteen people in the May class. And then they also had a Stop the Bleed class with roughly forty attendees. Their pre-disaster mitigation plan is expected to have a hard launch in September of twenty-five, and they're still working on the progress of that. But, and the road closure, five-one-one road closures, they talked about rapid sale limits will be excluded on that notification system. And then Homeland Security Grants, there has been a reduction for the very first time in ten years. Region four, which is our region, took over one hundred thousand dollars in cuts, and some items were removed off of that request. Community resilience assessment, reported sixty agent members were brought in for discussion, and the agencies will participate in following workshop in September. Mutual aid agreement, we're working with the Sentinel Project, Wyoming Emergency Management Office on the missile project, and updating agreements with the regional offices. Some of the other things that went on that are of note, they have, the biggest one is the three-year exercise schedule. There'll be, there will be a tabletop exercise, functional and full-scale emergency management-centric exercises focusing on mass fatality operations. And it'll be, it'll land on the same year as the airport's full-scale tri-annual exercise. So EM's going to piggyback on that one. Central States Fair, fair's coming up. It's coming up here pretty quick, and it'll, outside of that, most things were just updates and getting ready for the fair, and figuring out who's going to volunteer where, and things that nature. However, they did talk about the budget, they talked about their ask, they talked about, we had some discussion about funding capital projects, and so there was a discussion, and they brought the information back to the board, what was stated here in our budget meeting. And I'm hoping that they take that seriously in those conversations and understand that, you know, and I told them where we're at with this budget, you know, we're already looking at how we're going to manage through this budget system. So if you think you're going to get that, that's a big ask at a time when we've got tight dollars. I said, y'all need to think outside the box and start looking at other ways within the manner that you have within your realm to be able to raise some extra funds, because you can't always rely on the county to do your big projects, or vision funds or whatever. So outside of that, that's about it.
Thanks, Travis. Ron?
Well, the Fire Service Board, we held that meeting on at the Rapid Valley Volunteer Fire Department, and most of the discussion that night was relative to what we talked about today, the OSHA one fifty-six emergency response standard, just a lot of concerns there. And hopefully, we'll get all that ironed out going forward. That's all I have.
Do you have anything you wanted to add? Devin says you didn't have no meetings.
I had a couple meetings, well, things I went to, so. The Military Appreciation Barbecue, that was very good with, Helene introduced the thirteen members that got awards from the National Guard and the Air Force. So the barbecue was wonderful, the food was wonderful. Saw a lot of our Pennington County representatives there. So with our sheriff, I saw the police chief and some other people, but Helene did a good, what do you call it? She was the emcee for it, did a really good job. Yeah, they do him. And then I went to the meeting with the seven, it's called the Seven Council Fires, it's twenty-four tribes. It's another meeting that I attended, I could not get there at nine. I met with Cindy at ten for the budget, so I got there about eleven. When I got there, they were talking about, basically, the shipo and tipo through the Forest Service, and the representation of an appointed member from the tribal tribes that would be representing with the Forest Service. This was basically a national-level meeting on the Forest Service. Sounds like in five weeks, there should be a resolution with that. Also, sat in, which is very interesting, Little Big Horn, there was a National Parks representative, and they did have to reject the first bids that they had for that facility to re-change the Little Big Horn and that facility. They want to look out there, and some really exciting things if you ever go to the Little Big Horn site. So that was interesting, and then I had to go. So I thanked them for letting me be a part of their meetings. Very interesting. If you've ever been to the meetings, they talk a number of things. Last time, again, there was, Noma's there, and their representative. So always good meetings, good representation from all the tribes, and some really good discussion, frank discussions, which I like, on how things are going to move forward, and not just to discuss, but actually make some action on it. So again, the action that's coming in five weeks is the Forest Service, they're going to have an appointed member, it sounds like the federal level of the Forest Service will let one of the tribal members represent, so.
That's it. Thanks, Deb. Quite frankly, I think I'm going to wait till the next meeting when Gary's back to report on the NACO conference, because I, my flights were delayed, and I didn't get in until like midnight last night, and I took off this morning and didn't bring, I want to do justice to what happened at the meeting. I can give a brief one, but my notes are at home. It was a good conference, the new election of president, but there were some good things that I'll come back and report on, childcare. There was some really good stuff on that. I'll look up and I'll bring that back. Just some of the numbers off the top of my head, one meeting, the meeting that I went to, I think they said forty-seven percent of childcare is done privately. Parents, non-traditional daycare centers, that type of thing. It was right around that percentage, it was pretty high. And the reason, one of the main reasons, the studies that that gal showed was, biggest part is the cost. It's cheaper to do daycare in-house than it is to do a facility, and parents and so forth. But I've got some of those notes, and I think it's very interesting. I'll bring that back. One other highlight that I'll update on more was I went to the NACO's Board of Directors meeting, and they had a report from a guy that does, gathers information, and this was very interesting. And he showed, I think it was Chicago or someplace like that, or they, it was like the Board of Equalization, they broke out the properties in the area to owner-occupied, non-owner-occupied, and they stretched out the span of it for fifteen years, so they could identify what had happened in fifteen years in certain areas. And they discovered that in a lot of lower-income areas were getting bought up by investors. And this program showed a lot of that stuff, and it was, you know, quite frankly, the data is what it is. It's just interesting when you go to do planning and so forth, to be able to know some of that stuff. And I just stumbled across that meeting by accident, and I'm glad I did, because it was a report that of, I didn't see that, that report, I wouldn't have been aware of it, but that is something I was going to talk to Shannon about. And I also, and Gary will help me out, we both attended the AI meeting, artificial intelligence meeting, and brought back some information we'll give to Lori, we need to get prepared for that stuff. And so I got the booklets and all that stuff, but I'll bring that on in at our next meeting.
So I watched a couple PBS stations or programs, exactly what you're talking about, and what they've, what happened to either buy them out because they were cheaper, and bigger organizations decided to change. In some cases, it was positive, in others, you misplaced people. So if you, if you're.
So if you, if you're, that's your bottom line, when you're doing things like that, we get it, there needs to be revitalization, but there also needs to be something that replaces that with areas that people can move forward in, so.
You know, Deb, that you bring that up, you know, one of the highlights of what that speaker spoke about was mobile home parks, was one of the biggest, they're the most affordable housing, and those were the ones getting bought up by investors and raising rates, and I, I don't want to repeat what he said, you know, but I mean, that was one of the targeted things that they, they spoke about, but.
And you, and you can, there's some really nice, if you look, mobile homes aren't mobile homes anymore, they're better looking than a lot of the housing areas or houses, so.
I'd encourage you to take a drive past Menards in that, in that area back there that they just developed. It's, that's a well-planned out one.
I'll go look.
Yeah. That's the most newest one that I've seen in our community in years, and that's supposed to be more affordable for retirees, because they include lawn care and a lot of different stuff, so.
I went to Washington Member State, and a lot of those areas, you already know, trying to build something on those areas and try to clear something just to make a house, I mean, just, it doesn't matter who you are, affordable for that, and what that costs. So a lot of them are doing a lot of the, well, homes are, whatever you call them, duplex, I don't know what you call them, what do you, what's, they're not called mobile homes. Park models, but.
Or tiny home?
No.
They're better looking than.
Modulars?
Modulars, yes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, just, just keep that in your mind, because I've gotten, I don't know about you guys, but I've gotten stuff in the mail saying, do you want to sell your property, da-da-da-da, and you see signs across town, you want to sell your house, you know, that it's not just Airbnbs and this and that affecting affordable housing, there's more to it than that, so.
Yeah, people, even on our motels, but we haven't sold them because of that reason, we did it for a reason, and it's a, there's a niche for that area, that it makes a difference for their lives and, and brings life skills and stuff to the next step of where they can buy houses or modulars or whatever. So every, every step that you have or take away from in those areas for people to move forward, you need something else to take its place, so. I totally agree.
But in-home daycare was a big one, and I would, I'll gather that information up and be able to hand some of that out, because I think that's, our community is doing some great things with the help of a career of it, and Elevate, I think they've got some stuff going on, but this in-home daycare, one of the things that impressed me the most about this, from this guy that started this business, was that he provides training for in-home, you know, they come in, put the website, tell them what they need, if they need subsidies to help them out, that, but also, the biggest thing was the training, but also, he offers substitute daycare people. So in order to give them breaks, he, they could do something along those lines, but a lot of it had to do with training. Quite frankly, the way he put it, it's the Airbnb of daycare. You know, people come into his site, search the sites, and they could find stuff, but granted, this is a much bigger population than Rapid City, but I think some of it could.
Well, we looked at that with Holly for daycare, and did come to fruition, because there's other areas that we needed to take care of the employees at, but just so we have the information to give to the employees and anything we could do to make that happen, so that if some of those areas can be taken care of, we also have state rules and regs, but some of those might not have to change, but in order to accommodate a lot of people, affordability, that's your bottom line.
Well, bottom line is the cost for daycare for the, to get someone who's certified and trained and so forth, the hourly wage isn't up there to where, and that was one of the points, very well made, that the in-home daycare is actually only made like 15 bucks an hour, if at the most, and the, the average is much higher than that. So I mean, I think, I'll bring that, the information, you can look on the website and that type of stuff and kind of look through it. It may be a little bit too big for our area, but it's some good concepts of things, so. But I'll bring that. Is there anything else for the good of the business?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Laster. Seconded by Roskin to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.